Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the 3rd of May Strategy and Policy Committee Meeting. Welcome to elected members. I note we have some apologies, at the moment we only just have a quorum, so there will be no bathroom breaks in the next 60 seconds. Welcome to members of the public staff and the media and our online viewers. Committee will break for morning tea at 3pm. So, apologies, I've got apologies from councillor Wilson and councillor Forsyth. Deputy Mayor has advised he will be late, he's attending a civic function. I have late apologies from councillor Gallagher as well. Are there any other apologies? No? So with that, I'll move the apology.
Sorry, I assume there's an apology for you. There's a standing.
Yeah, I hear it's apology, yeah. For you and...
Second.
Thank you, your worship. All those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? That's carried. Now, you'll have to bear with me if I'm slightly slower off the mark, this is the first time I'm chairing a meeting using a computer and just saving some trees, so if I'm a little bit behind, I apologise now. I'm sure I won't be, though. Right, confirmation of the agenda. With the addition of a late item, which is the Founder's Theatre Discussion Document, we'll put that at the end of the agenda, make that item 14, and that was loaded on to our FTP site last night, and I think, and hard copies have been circulated, so I'll be adding that to the agenda. Just pointing you to item 6 on the agenda, that is the preparation of a plan change in Temple View. Now, I wasn't here for agenda setting, but this committee doesn't have authority to make decisions on district plan, only the council can do that, so I am recommending that, in conversations with the CE and her worship, that that be removed and moved to the ordinary council meeting of the 26th of May. And one other change to the agenda, with the leave of the committee, is moving up item 8, which is the age-friendly global network to accommodate the time restrictions on one of the visitors for that item. If any questions on those changes to the agenda? If everybody is comfortable with that, I will move that that agenda be received, seconded by?
Yep, I will.
Thank you, your worship. All those in favour?
Aye.
Any against? That's carried. Are there any declarations of interest? No, there being none, we will move on to item 4, which is the public forum. There's one speaker to the public forum, and that's Sandy Turner, the General Manager of the Hamilton Central Business Association, and she's going to be speaking on item number 7, so welcome, Sandy. You're very familiar with the process and the three minutes. And you've got someone with you? Hi.
Hi. I'm Michelle Bailey, I'm the Chair, Acting Chair of Hamilton.
Right, Michelle, hi, nice to meet you. Right, when you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair and City Councilors, for the opportunity to be able to speak to you all today. I'd like to start by commending council on the policy process. We believe it was robust and thorough. A working group selected by council, including property owners, investors, developers, retail and commercial tenants, elected members, HCC staff, of course myself and an exec committee member, worked on the document and had many meetings over that process. The draft policy was completed and then sent out to stakeholders and other parties, including the Property Council, Chamber of Commerce, obviously our organisation and members, and business representatives from both Frankton and Hamilton East. All feedback was included in the final draft, which is the document presented to HCC today for sign-off. The recent Business and Investment Subcommittee meeting was to discuss the policy, not the performance of Hamilton Central Business Association. Unfortunately, the process has been used as a political platform, and our association has become political collateral. It is not beneficial for any organisation to be criticised unfairly, and we are encouraged to subsequently hear that the information published in the Waikato Times is not supported or endorsed by the Property Council. The concerns raised by councillor King are completely unjustified. Our reports to Hamilton City Council, twice annually, include our current business plan, which has been approved by members prior, our budget and end-of-year progress, and then we also meet halfway through the year for a progress update. During the last five years, under my tenure, reporting to council, our association has never come under disrepute or criticism. In fact, we've been praised and congratulated on our successful results. Three of those years have been while councillor King has been in office. Over the last three months, over 20 new businesses have opened their doors in the CBD. Buildings being sold and redevelopments are at an all-time high. We have had reports from retailers that the sales are up 10% on last year, and work needs to continue, but we are not disheartened. Having a vibrant and thriving CBD does not and should not sit solely with the association. It needs to be a collaborative effort. We are very happy to work with council, the Property Council, the chamber, and other key stakeholders, in the best interests of our members, and the Hamilton CBD. We have always been willing to do so. In theory, HCC supports the idea of a CBD board. We have watched with interest at the success that both the bid and the CBD board operate collaboratively together in Auckland CBD. We look forward to once again reporting on our year's progress at the next scheduled reporting session on the 16th of August, as we have achieved a lot. However, today is not about our association's performance, nor other opinions on our efforts to date, it is about ensuring that we have a current policy document that ensures that any bid operating within the city has a correct policy and process to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, did you wish to add anything to that?
No, I think it's all covered. I think the key is that we represent our members, and we're working in the best interests of them and the future of the CBD, and I've had some fantastic discussions recently with the chamber and with Thomas from Property Council, and we're all really keen to work together because we have got a common goal, so I think that's all positive for the future.
Thank you. Right, our committee questions, councillor Mallett.
Thank you, thanks, Andy, thank you. One of the issues that may have came up was the perception that the CBD association was a little retail-focused, rather than retail and, you know, commercial being accountants, lawyers, blah, blah, blah. Is that a valid concern?
I think an example I could use is when we held our public protest rally around IRD leaving the city. We were able to gather support and send a submission to central government, which is currently still under review. Unfortunately, neither the Property Council nor the chamber were able to sign the document or speak at that event, because they had to be apolitical. We were in a unique position where we didn't have to, and that's an example of some of the work that we can achieve. I can give you many other examples, but...
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Oh, councillor Gallagher?
I don't want to get into the particular argument, but surely individual elected members, myself included, are entitled to make constructive critical comment of any organisation. I'd hate if I opened my mouth to be accused of being electioneering.
Because, sorry, councillor Gallagher, perhaps we could, I know that Sandy did raise some conversation around that, but public forum is the public's...
Sure, I'll accept your ruling, Madam Chair, I've got another question.
Opportunity? Okay, yes, a few questions.
Thank you. Just perhaps what I'm interested is that, you know, moving through, you know, the collaborative relationship, because all Chamber of Commerce, Property Council, the City Council, your own organisation, obviously want a good outcome for the CBD, we all want that. What I'm hearing from this presentation is that that sort of dialogue, discussion, collaboration is very much on the way, is that a fair...
We have always thought it was, something that we were all working together on. I can think of several examples where we have co-joined and run joint events, so we were a little bit, it came a little bit left field. There was no prior consultation with our organisation that Property Council had some issues, and that's why we were a little bit dumbfounded. We believe that we had a great working relationship, and the same with the chamber.
You talked, obviously, of the work around the IRD, and just putting aside the decision that government has made through its officials. Apart from the demonstration, one would assume, obviously, you talked to the, you know, who else? You talked to the ministers or the MPs?
Absolutely, yeah. I've got a huge paper trail.
It was a multi-pronged approach.
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
Right, thank you. Are there any further questions on...
Just a note to the Chair, that I have been personally criticised, and that I will address that when the item comes up.
Yeah, thank you, councillor King. Okay, thank you very much for taking the time to talk to us today. Thank you. Right, let's move on to page 5, item 5, which is the open minutes of the 22nd of March Strategy and Policy Committee Meeting.
Apologies for lateness, I was at another civic function.
Yes, thank you councillor, I put those before you. Are there any matters arising on the minutes from the 22nd of March? If there are no matters arising?
Just one, and I've discussed this with Chris Allen.
Page 5?
Oh. The sustainability commentary, oh, page 10. So there was a discussion, a presentation by the Sustainability Advisory Panel. During that, Jeanette Fitzsimons gave some evidence that the Waikata River was, from memory, I think she said degraded 70% from when it entered Hamilton to when it left Hamilton. I asked for some objective evidence of that, and I've asked Chris, and Chris is going to bring some evidence of that, so that we can clarify what that actually meant, the implications, if it was accurate, who's causing it, blah, blah, blah. Actually, I don't think it's going to be blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, so that's been noted, noted that the Healthy Rivers Plan was intending to address that matter.
Yes.
That's, you comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay, there are, oh, councillor Gallagher?
Yes, sorry, look, we're, obviously, the confines is minutes, true and correct record. The matters arising, particularly item 16, that would flip later in the agenda under action list or potential action list, because there was a report à la Ruukura trees, but I realise that that report came before council.
Yes, it did, yeah.
You know, what I'm wanting is some kind of update, verbal update, and I have seen a written update, but I think a verbal update's quite helpful.
I think we could do that at the action list here, because I think it's been closed off in the action list, because it went to council as well, so we'll pick that up then, if you're happy with that. Okay, if there are no other matters arising from the minutes of the 22nd of March, I will move those. Do I have a second there? Councillor Mallett, thank you, is there any debate on the minutes? All those in favour?
Aye.
Are there any against? That's carried. Okay, we're on to item 7, page 27, this is the bid policy, we're, sorry, we're bringing up, oh, she is here, sorry, we're bringing up item 8, that's right, so that is the, no, not item 8. My numbers are...
Age-friendly?
Age-friendly, is that item 8? Page 45, sorry, my numbers on my thing here are wrong.
The whole system's collapsed.
I knew this was going to be a challenge, but I'm determined, I'm determined.
Do you really need to save that tree?
Yes, I do. So this, so we've got Dee and Nick and Peggy, the Chair of the Older Persons Panel, going to present the report, and this has come through as a recommendation from the Older Persons Panel, requesting that the city join, be the first city in New Zealand to join the age-friendly global network. So with that, I will hand over first to Dee to present the report. Thanks, Dee.
Good afternoon, councillors, your worship. I'll take the report as read, I think it's pretty South African country. I've got Professor Peggy Kurtman-Boiden here, who will actually introduce the item and actually give a little bit of history to where we've got to now.
Thank you, Dee, and good afternoon, councillors. You may remember that one year ago, almost to the day, the Hamilton City Council very wisely adopted the advisory group's Older Peoples Plan, and I think Hamilton City Council can be very pleased with itself, insofar as, within the last year, almost all of the actions planned in that plan have been completed. A report will come to you at your next meeting. And in doing so, I believe that there is a greater awareness of the future increasing numbers of older people in Hamilton, and the question is, what are we going to do about it? The Older People's Plan for the Hamilton City Council was a plan to improve the council's facilities and services. The age-friendly plan for Hamilton is proposed now, today, would also include all other facilities and services in Hamilton, and be community-based and supported by the community. Now, to do that, it is proposed that a strategic steering, age-friendly steering group is set up to write the plan, and the plan would be accredited by the World Health Organisation, that would allow us to get access to other city plans internationally, and those ideas would help us implement our plan. It would also see Hamilton as New Zealand's first accredited age-friendly city. The question is, one of resources, perhaps, from your point of view, we already have the support from the Ministry of Social Development's Office for Seniors behind us, literally, they are watching us as we speak, the support of various community groups and the organisation and their letters of attachment there, but I should say that we have also one from Grepa, and one from Rawa Oa Kumatuat Charitable Trust, and one, I think, coming from the minister. We would also set up a steering group of people in the city who are interested in expertise and also have leadership potential, and these people would come from those who I observe to be in their 60s and 70s in Hamilton, and have a huge amount to contribute to Hamilton's future. Today, we are hoping for the support of the Hamilton City Council. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Is there anything else you wanted to add, Dee?
Happy to take any questions.
Okay, so we'll go straight to questions, we've got councillor Mallett first. Councillor Mallett?
Thank you very much, Peggy, and thank you for all the work you've done on this. My question comes from a kind of representation-democracy point of view. There's a lot of stuff in here that's lovely, and with all due respect, and I hope you take this right way, it's apple pie, it's nice stuff, and it's things that we should be doing. Then we start talking about requires, it requires written support from local government to join the network. Why would that, why can't you guys just scive off and join? You're an independent group of citizens who are free to do whatever you like, aren't you? Why do you need...
Yes, theoretically speaking, but insofar as...
No, you're not theoretically, you are.
Well, okay, but the...
Why do you need us?
If you're talking about the advisory panel of older persons, it is actually set up by the Hamilton City Council, also from the World Health Organisation's point of view, they need to ensure that there is some overall local body who supports it, and that it is a legitimate activity for that city at this point in time.
Okay, point 19, joining the network would require Hamilton.
Yes.
Okay, Hamilton is a city...
Yes.
...of 150-odd thousand people, all sovereign individuals, how do you get them to do something like that? You mean, does that, should that say, should require the Hamilton City Council?
Well, our recommendation is...
So it's 19, I don't know if you've got the...
Yes, yes, I understand that, but if you look at the recommendations, 9c, that the council instruct the Older Persons Advisory Panel to appoint a steering group to develop an age-friendly plan. So that may be a way of setting up the steering committee, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, so joining this group...
Yes.
...binds the city council to do what?
If I may read the Chair, Hamilton City Council isn't bound by anything. Ultimately, it is giving a tick of approval that it actually supports the city actually signing up to the global network, which is a good thing in terms of developing a community plan for our aging demographic, and we all know that we are a large aging demographic for Hamilton City moving forward. So it doesn't bind council into anything legally or financially. Basically, it is giving a tick of approval that Hamilton City Council endorses the city actually joining the global network.
Okay, I guess my point is, why do you need us to endorse you?
The world...
I mean, if you need us to endorse you, it implies that there's some strings attached to that.
Yeah, it is a requirement of the World Health Organisation.
To be authorised by the...
That's correct, that's the process that we require.
Local authority.
That's correct.
And also, you're working in the capacity of the panel, which is in the council structure.
That's correct.
Yeah.
So anything that comes out of this would only be advisory, would only be...
Anything that comes out of this will be done by the community, and will be put into practice by the community. If, for example, just to take a minor...
So why don't the community do it now, then?
Well, we could, but there are huge advantages for us to get access to the pool of ideas internationally, 267 cities who are already interested in how to make their cities age-friendly. This is a new endeavour worldwide, and rather than reinventing the wheel, let's borrow a few ideas from...
Yeah, that's all very sensible, very logical, and quite rational.
Yeah.
But I still can't get the point of, why aren't you doing this, and then just coming to us at our annual plan meetings, so this is, we're the Older Peoples Council, these are the things we think you should do, along with what everyone else in our community, you know, every other group comes to us and says, you know, we want some sports grounds, we want you to improve the roads, we want to improve the facilities for older folks, da-da-da, but we don't sign up, you know, the council doesn't endorse, those groups are free, and you are free to do whatever you like, and bring whatever information you want to the council.
Yeah, I understand that, and that's a very democratic thing to do, but every so often, I suggest to you that there is a status to be involved here, there is huge status for the other cities in becoming an age-friendly city. Some people are now travelling the world of age-friendly cities, and for Hamilton to become the first age-friendly city in New Zealand is quite something. This will go round the world within 24 hours. We are not the only Hamilton in the world, so we have to, this makes us unique.
Yeah, but why do you need us?
Well, can I, sorry, just to help, I mean, like I just said earlier, they are an advisory panel, they are in the governance structure, and like any of the other advisory panels, when they feel strongly enough about an item, they can recommend to the parent committee, and that's what this is.
That's correct.
Okay.
I've got councillor Pascoe and councillor McPherson.
Thank you, Chair. My question is, perhaps a flow-over from councillor Mallett, when I read this report, am I correct in assuming that council's involvement, council's initial involvement, will be to help the steering group write the plan? Not write the plan, but provide support for the steering group?
That's correct.
So that's the allocation of the budget of $6,000 on Imparer 39. Okay, so that's one of the reasons why council needs to be involved at this stage, to provide that secretarial support to help you write the plan, that's required.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. And the second question is, is there any ongoing resource costs as far as council, any additional ongoing resource costs to maintain this membership insofar as council is concerned, once membership has been granted and presumably continues on an annual renewal basis?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor McPherson.
Yes, just following the point that councillor Pascoe just raised, that this would enable council to provide secretarial support, I think were used. Does not council already do that for the older persons group?
That's correct, that's next position.
Yeah, and so any work that the groups involved in would get secretarial support anyway?
Yes, that's correct.
So regardless of whether we join this organisation or not, I would have said, or network or not, it seems like we've got that secretarial support in place, I just think it's important to distinguish there.
Can I also add that through the Ministry of Social Development, that they've allocated resources as well, and staffing to support this as well, so dedicated resource?
Is this only to Hamilton, or is it to all organisations in the country?
This is one of the reasons why, by being first, we are being given a lot of support. They have contracted one person full-time for 18 months, and the number of communications I've had with the person, and Nick, is probably at least a couple of days a week.
That sounds like on the north side of $100,000 worth of resource, just on that...
Yes, and if you kindly include my unpaid salary, that would be good, too.
Okay, so it makes me wonder, there's a lot of resource being put into planning.
Yeah.
What's proposed for actioning? Anything that comes out of the plan, because one of the issues that I have with a lot of plans is whether any action comes out, and whether it can be afforded if any is proposed.
So if I, I might talk to that. I mean, ultimately, this report here is to get approval by council to join the network. In terms of the planning, that's a little way off yet, because it's still to be determined, but ultimately, we've had these discussions internally as well, that should there be any actions around that, that we would bring anything back to council.
What, as a 10-year plan sort of proposal?
At this stage, councillor, I can't answer that question, because that plan and the planning process is still to be determined by the steering group that will be appointed.
Yeah, these international organisations, like the last one we were a member of in the late 18, 1990s, sorry, sorry, I mean, I didn't mean that as a joke, but the, I'm just trying to remember it, oh, 20, no, I can't remember the name, but anyway, we're a member of a UN-based international organisation. We never actually got much out of it, except a plaque and some mentions and documents in terms of reality, you know, the worry here is that this might be similar, we might get a nice plan, you know, how do you translate any move in this direction into action?
Well, no, I think that's a critical question, and ultimately, we wouldn't be embarking on developing a plan for the sake of a plan, it needs to have some action behind it that actually brings actually something tangible to the city for the older population, and as we're, as I've mentioned before, and Peggy can kind of allude to this as well, we're an aging demographic for Hamilton City, so this is a good thing for us to do.
Yeah, I'm one of them, but...
We're all one of them.
What, aging...
The other conflict of interest, Dave?
Yeah, more than you have, anyway, Gary.
Deca.
Yeah, that's right. The last question I had, really, was, does this signal a change in direction for the council for older people, their city, older persons, sorry, advisory panel, I'm trying to keep up with the names here, given that the World Health Organisation's global network is heavily into health issues for older people? I've just had a look at their website, and probably three-quarters, two-thirds, three-quarters is about health-related issues, and that's an issue I recall from our discussions earlier, was not covered by the previous plan, other than I mention, I think that it was discussed at some point. So are you planning to get more into that area?
Well, the advisory group, because it is the Hamilton Advisory Group, only looks after the Hamilton City Council's facilities and services for older people. This plan would be wider, business right across the city, okay? Health, well, it's a question of priorities of the steering group, but in the area of recreation, probably that might be a priority, housing might be a priority, it depends on what from the community comes as the gaps that we have in Hamilton.
So is the Population and Health Group up at the DHB involved in the discussion?
No, not at the moment, but we would work with them, of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Gallagher?
I mean, obviously, those strategic-focused partnerships, you know, obviously the DHB would be in terms of the Aging Strategy, the DHB draft plan, the Waikata Plan, the Hamilton Plan, which have been made reference... plan, which have been made reference to. If I look at the item 20, the improvement of the quality of life for older residents, I guess what some of the questions around about, you know, the theory and the aspiration is really good. From your experience of overseas cities, do you have any sort of kind of examples of the tangible things that have started to happen, all right? You see what I mean? So I think what people tell, the plan looks good, but it's actually wanting to see how a plan can turn into some really tangible benefits over time.
The country in the world that has the highest percentage of older people is Japan. I would not say they are particularly age-friendly, but I have seen older people hold up long lines of vehicles, which from the business community's point of view may or may not be a good thing. But more positively, I've got a list here in front of me, it's obvious, the provision of age-friendly seats, and you've heard me at it before, that it's very difficult to get, as an older person, to get out of chairs without an arm. And even middle-aged people would get out of it, and whoops, you people here have chairs with arms, and that's fine. But more importantly, I think, looking at our playgrounds where we cater for children, but our grandparents are often at playgrounds as well. Also, going to access for employment. We are having nationwide a huge increase in the number of women in their late 60s and 70s who are staying in employment. We need to think about the flexibility of working hours, the flexibility of working places. Now, I'm not going to point the finger at any particular organisation or place here in Hamilton, but I think by raising the awareness of people to that will be very useful in Hamilton. The two examples that I give you come from Adelaide, that has become an age-friendly city.
And if we'd say the employment is an interesting, because obviously, you're dealing with the, you know, the isolation and the health impacts that come from social isolation.
That's right.
And around the work stuff is really interesting, you know, what, you know, do people stay on and work purely for economic reason, or in part for social interaction reasons? Because once you're out of the workforce, the danger, you feel that you don't have that. So I guess, will there be some of that research and study brought to bear?
Yes, but also the fact that Hamilton has now a lot of older people who they should be able to keep employed. Or put it this way, we need their expertise, and how can we keep them at least part-time in the workforce in Hamilton?
And can I ask you a question, because I think it's interrelated? The benefits for our young ones of this policy?
Yes, they are the mentors, they are the leaders, and they hand on that information to their younger cohort.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Mallot?
Just a couple of objective things.
Are there questions?
Yeah, there are. What would be a success measure for this?
The success measure of what I've just been talking about would obviously be the continuation of work for older people in particular organisations. For example, supermarkets.
So why would this group, why would this initiative have any impact on that?
Because we can take a look at international, similar organisations and see how they are dealing with it, rather than...
When supermarkets notice that their employees happen to be older, supermarkets will no doubt make certain concessions to that, by perhaps putting some car parks closer, or putting some handles on the chairs, or putting handrails around the place, I don't know. It won't take the UN to do that, I mean, that's just what people do.
Yes, we... I'm sorry, Madam Chair, but I could give lots and lots of detailed examples to what you're saying, and I'm not sure whether that's useful in the time available. But for example, let me give you a quick example. The collections of the carriages in supermarket car parks, often if you give that job to a younger person, it becomes a racetrack. If you employ three older men, they will do it seriously and help older customers at the same time.
Would older women do it too?
Yes, they are not gender-specific, but men like to be outside more than women, I think.
Well, I mean, having gone to a supermarket reasonably regularly, I have never, ever found that to be the case.
Okay, let's not...
Well, it is important, I mean, we are asking questions, I mean, again, this is us in our governance role, trying to make sure if this is a wild goose chase, with all due respect to people, or if there is something of value that will add to our community. Okay, how will we know that it has failed?
When we do not have people volunteering to lead the project.
I just struggle to find how this will change what the community will do anyway.
I don't think the community realises how much an increasing number of older people will change our lives. Right now, we have one in 10 walking down the street are older people. In Taronga, it is one in five, almost, okay? And we need to think about what we're going to do with e-bikes, motor scooters, people with dementia, and so on. And Hamilton has a huge advantage in being able to plan ahead, as opposed to Taronga and other places who are trying to catch up. Although I have to give it to Taronga, they are now calling it the silver economy, and there will be a one-day seminar on that topic in July.
Yeah, I mean, I've just, you know, lots and lots of plans come for us, come before us, they all seem useful. The council's got huge overheads, which it can't understand where they've come from. And this is the sort of stuff that ends up building into an overhead. And I just, you know, I've got folks who are 80, they live in the Mount, and there are lots of old folks' homes. The community by itself evolves to cater for the people who are within the community.
Are you debating, councillor Mallot?
Well, I'm just, no, I guess, further I'm saying, I don't understand how this is going to add to what the community does anyway.
So if you don't have any questions, any further questions, leave that comment for debate time.
Well, I guess I was asking, you know, that's what I was asking, what the success measures are, what the failure measures are. At what stage would we say no? Like, you mean, for example, you know, we had the gym thing at the pools, you know, and trotting along, not doing what it's supposed to be doing, we still haven't taken action. It just concerns me that this will be one of those things as well, that in several six months, there'll be a report done, a whole lot of work will get done, but no one's actually measuring whether we've made any difference, any difference that would, that the community by itself would have done anyway.
Can I just reiterate, that actually, we're not presenting a plan in this report? We're actually just presenting for council's approval to join the network. The plan is yet to be developed, along with the success factors and the measures of how do we actually measure the success of that plan, which will all be part of that process further on down the track.
And that the steering group will commence that with the support of the council? And will that then come back to the committee or to council at some point in the future, where councillor Mallot can then test those measures and those KPIs, or whatever they're going to be? So it will work its way through?
No.
I'm happy to move this.
Yeah, I have a second.
Oh, okay, so...
Just one more question.
Oh, sorry, so the mayor is moving, and councillor Young, you're seconding that? Yeah? But you had a question?
Just a quick question. So the action plan from the steering group, actually, it won't be coming back to council, right? It's not a council plan? It sits with the steering group?
That's correct, but to alleviate councillor Mallot's, kind of concerns that potentially it might be a plan that, for the sake of a plan.
Well, yes, but it still sits under the advisory panel, which is in the council structure, so there will be oversight by... The advisory panel's not, doesn't sit out on its own, councillor Young. It is in the council structure.
But the steering group is a standalone steering group.
Yeah, the steering group's also put together by the older persons.
So the action plan is under that group?
That's correct.
Yes.
So would it or wouldn't it come back to council for progress reports from the steering group? That's what I...
Yeah, well, I would have thought that it would have.
I was going to add some things in to my...
Okay, under the older persons. Let's hear what the mayor has to say, if she's going to have that...
Right, so what I was going to do is move the motion on page 46, but when we come to C, I also suggesting that we add in, with the timeframe set out in paragraph 35 of this report, because there needs to be some bookings on timeframes. And D was that the, because I think in this report, it talks about the steering group reporting back to council. In my view, it would be the older persons advisory panel reporting back. So a D would be that the older persons advisory panel is to report back to this committee. I guess, just checking with you, in my view, it would be helpful to have a touch point about the plan before it's completed, as opposed to just presenting the completed plan. I think that's always helpful. So perhaps it would say, D would say that the older persons advisory panel is to report back to this committee at appropriate times during the development of the plan. And that way, you can identify when those might be. So that's the motion I was going to...
Councillor Young, are you happy with that? Councillor McPherson, does that cover up your concern about reporting back some of it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. All right, so thank you, thanks for that. So that's been moved by, her worship's seconded by councillor Young, so we will debate that, your worship.
Excuse me, can we finish with questions?
Well, we had finished, I asked if there were any further questions, and no one raised their hand.
No, you didn't, I would have put my hand up.
Yes, I did.
Or can I ask questions, please?
All right.
Thank you. It was mentioned that Japan was not age-friendly. Do you agree that Japanese families look after their elderly to a higher standard than any other first-world country in the world? Any other developed first-world country in the world?
Canada comes to mind, or the Scandinavian country.
I said families.
Do the families look after people?
So my question, you said that Japan was not age-friendly. My question is, do you agree that Japanese families look after their old to a higher standard than any other developed country?
Than any other developed country?
The families?
No.
You don't think that Japanese family look after their elderly to a high standard?
I don't know that. Would you have that information?
Yeah, I mean, I...
I'm asking the expert in elderly matters, and the criticism was that Japanese are not age-friendly. So my question is, do Japanese families look after their... Do Japanese families look after their elderly?
It doesn't necessarily follow. You can have an age-friendly society, which scores very high on what city councils and health services do, but not necessarily do their families look after their people. It is two separate questions. You can be an age-friendly city, but not necessarily having an ageing-in-place policy as we do, where we are encouraged to stay at home and have neighbours and friends and family looking after you.
So my question was around your comment on Japan was not age-friendly, and so I'm just coming back and questioning that the difference in Japan, is the difference in Japan that their families look after their elderly instead of the state?
No, no, that's not true. But, you know, I'm a researcher, and I need the actual evidence to answer your question. I have also been to Japan many, many times, and know many Japanese families, and they not necessarily as families look after their people any better than we do, or any more than we do.
I would disagree with you on that. I've spent a lot of time in Japan too. The Japanese have, they live to the oldest age out of any...
So further questions, councillor King? You can use that point to debate.
Do you agree that, in defence of the Japanese, do you agree the Japanese elderly live longer than any other developed people in the world, even although they're smokers?
Yes, they do.
They're the highest smokers out of the developed world, and they also live to the oldest age.
I don't know about their smoking habits, I know about their sake habits, but they certainly have a greater longevity than what we do.
Just in response to one of your comments earlier, you said that if we join this organisation, Hamilton becomes an age-friendly city, and that people will come pouring in, visitors will come pouring in. How does joining the organisation make us age-friendly?
Well, because we plan ahead to improve our facilities and services, taking in mind our demographic of an older group of people. And so, for example, the Hamilton Gardens is a very good example, where they have mobility scooters for disabled and older people. They're also improving the pathways and the lighting. People are coming to the Hamilton Gardens, and a large proportion of them are older people.
We're not even part of the network yet. So what my question is, is you said that by joining the organisation, that would make us age-friendly. Surely, we become age-friendly by what we do, or as you pointed out already with the Hamilton Gardens, by what we've done?
That is correct, that is correct.
And it's separate to being a member, whether we're a member of the organisation?
Correct, you're right.
You mentioned that you were hoping for a letter of support from the minister. Which minister?
Minister of Social Development? Anne Tauling. Oh, yes, that's true, I'm sorry. The Minister for Seniors, Maggie Barry.
And when did you ask for that letter?
I personally didn't ask for it, but the Office for Seniors did, and we know that it's coming.
You've got a letter of support for the...
The letter is in here.
From the department, it's just not...
The Office for Seniors, yes.
Yep.
So when are you expecting a reply from the minister? When did you ask the minister for their support? Who asked the minister for their support?
Can I, through the Chair, the director of the Office for Senior Citizens would have requested that information. I can't talk on behalf of the minister's office of when that letter's going to come through.
No, I'm asking when the letter went to them, what was referred to that you'd asked. You're waiting for a letter of support from the minister. When was the minister asked for their support?
The minister was asked by Sarah Clark, who was the director of the Office for Seniors. She, I assume, asked a week ago, and informed me that a letter would be coming.
So central...
The minister is very, very supportive of this application, as she is also of the two other places, Capiti and New Plymouth, who are similarly being supported at this time and going through the same process.
And you also referred to, at one of your comments, it's a question of resources. What did that mean?
The resources will come from the community. My observation is that we have many semi-retired and older people themselves with the expertise and leadership, who could lead and do the actions on the projects that are suggested.
So any funding has come from the community, not from local government?
That's correct, but if I can, through the Chair, that level of detail has not been worked out yet, because we are not in the planning phase yet, we haven't developed a plan, we haven't got an action plan yet. This report, again, is really just to seek approval from this council to join the network.
So so far, we've spent $6,000?
No, we haven't spent $6,000.
So $6,000 has been allocated, is that correct?
$6,000 has been allocated through Nick Chester's role, who supports the older persons advisory panel. And ultimately, moving forward, when we move through that planning phase, that role will support some of that planning.
So there will be resources required from council?
Not at this stage, apart from what we've already indicated in the report.
$6,000?
That's correct. That's correct.
What's the likely ongoing costs?
If I may, through the chair, I don't know if I can answer that question again. I think I've answered that. We are not in that planning phase yet, so I can't give you any indication of that, councillor. Until we move through that process and the action plans are being developed, then we'll have a bigger, better picture of that. But at this stage, I can't give you that.
But aren't we locked in by then because we've joined your organisation?
We're not locked in, as I mentioned before. This actually gives us approval. Sorry, it gives endorsement for Hamilton City to actually join the global network. And as who worship has pointed out in one of the recommendations, that we actually, through the stages of the action and the development of the plan, that we would bring this back to council for visibility. If at that stage there are resourcing implications for council, that's where we will bring that information back.
So is it unreasonable at this stage to be asking what the costs of going ahead with this plan are? Surely we.
Sorry, can you repeat the question?
I don't, sorry councillor King, I don't know how many different ways Dee can answer your question.
We're looking at locking into spending money and I'm wondering, I'm asking how much money.
That's actually not what we've said. We're not locking into spending any money, and Dee has said that in several different ways. Other than if this goes ahead today, the six thousand dollars to get the plan going. And then it will, as in the mayor's motion, it will come back to the committees several times.
No, that's not quite correct with all due respect, Madam Chair.
Use your mic.
If you read, if you read paragraph thirty-nine, and that's what I've just decided I want to ask another question on. It says has been allocated, the six thousand has been allocated, which is like, that's already started being used. And I believe councillor King's question relates to what is the cost, if any, going forward, should we decide on this?
Yeah.
And I think it's entirely appropriate to ask that. In fact, it would be probably irresponsible not to ask that and be irresponsible for us not to be given an answer. And it may be, yes, we expect it'll be X, or it can be kept within the six thousand, it's all within staff, existing budgets, whatever like that, but we still should be able to ask that question.
Yeah, and I do think Dee did answer, but.
Well, I'm hearing six thousand's already allocated.
If I.
Yeah, I heard that as well.
Through the chair, the six thousand dollars is actually part of Nick's role in supporting the older person's panel. So it won't be any more than that of what's been identified in this report. So yeah, I don't know much more than I can say.
So there'll be no additional costs staffing time-wise?
No.
Than the, than your estimate of six thousand?
That's correct. So it'll be within baseline budgets. We're not asking for additional resourcing. It will be done within baseline budgets.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, may I comment? One of the things that we're trying to do in the new aging society is to capture the leadership and the expertise of the retired and semi-retired sixty and seventy-year-olds. There are an increasing number of them out there, and we would like to see their expertise and leadership leading and undertaking these sort of projects. We see it in the volunteers in Red Cross and in the social services. Why can't they also help the city in a wider sphere as well? And here would be one set of projects over a long period of time where people who become available would take up a particular project. The deal is they don't get paid for it. A lot of older people volunteer and they don't get paid for it. And that is their contribution to Hamilton where they have lived for the last twenty to thirty years. So I would not want to see this being seen as a Hamilton City Council draw on its budget. We are asking for six thousand for some next time, but even an administrative person might come forward as a volunteer. So we are trying to change the image of older people as well. They can contribute to Hamilton by leading projects for older people.
Thank you. All right, so there are no further questions. We've got the motion up on the board with the inclusion of the additional items. Your worship, you're happy with the wording there?
Yes, but my suggestion is that those matters in paragraph thirty-five would be included in the motion. Because I just think it makes it clearer in the future, so we don't have to run around looking for reports. So if you just cut and paste A to D.
And thirty-five.
And then it's, you know, it's sort of set out in the motion. I'm happy to speak to it.
Under C.
Yes, under C, where it says set out in paragraph thirty-five, just actually stick A to D or paragraph thirty-five in there. I'm happy to speak to it.
Okay, so while I'm doing that, your worship, would you like to?
If I may say that I think the report has been written in a way that probably hasn't been that helpful. That would be my first comment. What we are being asked to do here is to approve us, our city, joining the World Health Organisation's Age-Friendly Global Network. And I think there's probably a lot in this report that probably hasn't helped that. If I look at paragraph sixteen, it says what the global network is. It is an internationally recognised network of cities and communities committed to becoming age-friendly. And we are told that we will be the first in New Zealand to do this by this resolution. I want to commend the advisory panel for bringing this forward, because this is precisely what we ask them to do in their purpose and scope. And I have to say, of our advisory panels, the older person's one is very proactive. And so thank you, Peggy, for coming aboard and putting it in front of us, because this is your job. To say there's something important going on in the world and our advice is we should get on board. And I do agree with that advice. Any concerns about what the process will be have been helpfully included for us at page fifty. And I think that's really clear. And I don't think it needed any further explanation. I read that and I was absolutely clear what it was involved. The next point I want to make is included in the motion is our oversight. So that we will know what is going on and how this is developing, and if we have any concerns at those touchpoints, we can raise them. And because the advisory panel is part of our government structure, they need to listen to that advice and feedback from us to them. I think the final point I want to make is, we talk a lot about the demographics of our future. And so the older person's advisory panel are putting this in front of us and saying, well, walk the talk. And it's coming to a place near you very quickly and it is something that we can't change. Certainly in the immediate future. Our population is aging. We need to capture the wealth of experience of the older people in our community. Many of us who are either in that bracket already or fast heading to it. And we more importantly need our community to respond to what that future looks like. So I'm very clear what this is, and I think this is a very good initiative, and I want to thank you very much for putting it in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship. Councillor Young?
Yes, yes, I fully support the motion. I agree with the worship of the mayor. Now, look at the process, it's already clearly listed here, and on the next page, the eight age-friendly themes. They are all clearly listed there. And I know this councillor asked a question about whether we're looking after our older people. I can say, my younger brother's been looking after my mother, she's eighty-six years old, very well, no worries. But it doesn't mean Hong Kong is an age-friendly city. That is totally two different stories, two different things. Because we, as our culture, we look after our older people, but I don't believe it's the culture in New Zealand at the moment. So by joining the World Health Organisation, the global network, hopefully, something can be changed slowly in the future. And just lastly, brought up that line from the Office of Senior. Joining the global network provides opportunities to connect with communities from around the world and to learn and share experience. I think that is mainly what we need to do. Be the first city in New Zealand to join the network. And let's start work out the action plan and see the community leading this, and then work out the age-friendly city for Hamilton. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Further speakers? Councillor, councillor King?
To date, at this stage, although the financial status at the top of the report says there is no budget allocated, there is in fact six thousand dollars of staff time that has been spent, and I can't seem to get any real answer on what it is going to cost going forward. And this is likely to introduce more red tape. We have a district plan that heavily regulates what we can and can't do in our city to make it friendly for disabled people, aged people, people with disability, or even mums and dads with prams. This is likely to introduce more red tape, but it's also opening the door to the UN to come in and if you say very nicely, guide us on what we can and can't do. Through the standards that they set, which to me makes me uncomfortable. So I'm speaking against this. This is opening the door a crack, and the door opens wider, the floodgates open. And we end up with a more heavily regulated city, a harder city, a city with more costs, more cost to our ratepayers. And something that's very hard to unravel and get back out of. So this is our chance today to stop this. This is our chance today to not join this organisation and not be the first in New Zealand to take this step. I believe it's up to us to make our city an age-friendly city. It's up to this council to do it. It's up to our district plan to do it. And it's not for us to introduce other organisations on the other side of the world who come in and end up us being manipulated by a bigger organisation, a long way away from home.
Thank you, councillor Gallagher.
Yes, I'll be supporting the motion, and I think this is a good step in the correct direction. But obviously what I'm looking for, and I think the action plan, the timeline is really helpful, because it actually starts, dare I say, putting meat on the bone. So obviously what I'll be seeing, I'll pick up age twenty-eight, an age-friendly plan would also align with the Hamilton Plan through the goal of making Hamilton New Zealand's third city economy, then I've heard the reference to silver economies in Taronga, et cetera. So I'm wanting to give some flesh to that. Speaking in my other hat as a member of the District Health Board, we do have Waikato divided into three, three or four territorial authorities that are into growth, still aging. We have the other territorial authorities that are involved in potentially static population, where the impact of aging becomes even more significant in terms of the demographic makeup. So for me, the panel, by joining the Age-Friendly Global Network, it will be, I guess, giving extra ballast or depth to our existing older person's advisory panel and engaging fully and comprehensively with other key players, such as the District Health Board, Population Unit, et cetera, et cetera, your academic work, both locally, nationally and internationally. So I think there's actually a win, because obviously the changing demographic of our city and our region is a very crucial issue, and it is around participation. It is around really focusing around the negative health outcomes of social isolation. You know, how we keep all of our population engaged. It's around the definition even of aging. I mean, I've received some message from a friend, believe it or not, that I'm close to the aging profile. I reject that. That's a state of mind. Of course, I'm not in that category at all. And then, you know, we look at some of the objectives. Aging in place in housing. Older people are encouraged to live in their own homes or have a choice of housing that is appropriate and affordable, with a design for all ages. So that is actually, I'll be wanting with the social services, with other providers, with the economists, great detail, because obviously, one of the issues that we're finding and will start to find, and we're seeing this in Auckland, as the issue of housing affordability becomes more problematic, that not only hits the younger generation, in my view sadly and tragically, in terms of social connection and all the aspirations we believe as Kiwis, that will start, I think, to hit an increasing proportion, if we're not careful, of people who become older, you know, in the older age. And if we're not careful, the model where the bulk of older Kiwis own their own homes may change. Where people are going to be far more dependent and reliant on forms of social housing, et cetera, et cetera. I saw the other day in Auckland, and this is really relevant, where the mother is moving to the sleep-out, because the only way that her daughter, son-in-law and kids, grandkids can afford to even have a hope in highly of getting a house in Auckland is if they inherit or move into mum's house and she goes into the sleep-out in the back section. So those are, dare I say, some of the kind of broader, bigger issues and bigger challenges, which I'm, again, I'm not saying you guys can solve all of that. But it's some of the narrative that I'll be looking for, frankly. So I don't believe this is a feel-good. I don't believe this is added bureaucracy. I believe this is going to hopefully give us extra pieces of information, deep, comprehensive information to make us as a council on behalf of our community better able to do our job.
Thank you, councillor. You do know that old age, if you're lucky, will creep up on you, whether you want it to or not, even though you reject it.
I'm inspired by some good friends on this table, where I don't see them being very old at all.
Deputy Mayor and then councillor McPherson.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I support the resolution. It's a great opportunity for Hamilton and for our older people. And I'd like to thank Professor Cooper and Boyd for being the voice of older people in our community. And certainly your reputation as an international gerontologist gives strength to this proposal. I was certainly concerned about the tone and interrogation of our panel today. And I thought it rude and aggressive, and it did not need to be that way. A vote against this resolution will in fact be a vote against all older people in this city. And in an election year, those who are standing for election will do so at their own risk.
Thank you. Councillor McPherson?
Yes. Just a point of order.
What's your point of order, councillor?
I think it's misleading that a vote against this policy is a vote against all older people in Hamilton.
Councillor, um.
It wasn't an opinion.
Sorry, can I speak? Councillor King, that is an opinion.
It wasn't an opinion.
Expressed, it was an opinion expressed by the deputy mayor, and I'm comfortable with that.
He didn't say, I believe, he didn't say, he said, a vote against this policy is a vote against the older people of the city.
That is still him expressing an opinion. I don't think he presented that as fact at all, so I'm.
Do you like to ask him? Maybe Gordon would like to clarify.
Were you presenting that as fact, deputy mayor, or was that a debate opinion?
It was your opinion, wasn't it?
It was my opinion during debate.
That's enough, that's answered that, thank you. Councillor McPherson?
Yes, I think the deputy mayor's just showing how this issue can be politicised from both sides. It's a bit like the pot's calling the kettle black, actually. His comments that he just made, which were entirely. No, that's a fact. It's an absolute fact that if he thinks it's unhelpful, some of the questions, his comment was certainly even more unhelpful to the debate. I'm actually going to support.
Point of order, Chair.
What precisely is your point of order, deputy?
The point of order was that it was about the tone, not about the questions.
Is that a point of order?
And, so yeah, what exactly is your point of order?
Well, I was correcting councillor McPherson's assertion about the questions.
I'm sorry, your worship, it wasn't assertion, it was a statement of fact.
Okay, look. Councillor Mallett, you know what we're going with this time.
I told you it would work.
Yes, yes, you're right.
Thank you. As I was going to say before the deputy mayor interrupted me, I'm actually going to support the motion. I'm on your side, Gordy. So just hold on there, stay calm, stay calm, please.
We're getting too close, people will be talking about us soon.
They will be. I also listened to councillor Gallagher's passion. I also listened to Councillor Gallagher's passionate speech and even though he's in denial, I do believe his passion arises from his proximity to the age where the services will be needed. But he made a very good speech. I actually have a belief that's halfway between, that has some of Councillor Mallot's viewpoints in there. I do believe that a community or society will provide for the elderly people in quite a good way. I also believe that it doesn't help us to add to that. You know, I don't think it's one or the other. I think you always have a bit of both. So I don't think Councillor Mallot was speaking out of turn when he espoused that view. I just think we need to perhaps do a little bit more in some cases. The reason I'm going to support this is simply though because the proposal includes an interesting document from the Office for Seniors run by my old friend Maggie Barry as Minister at the moment. And that includes, I think Philip talked about it, the eight on page 51, the eight age-friendly themes. And I believe that it's going to be very useful for our Older Persons Advisory Group to become associated with those themes. I don't really care, it doesn't amount to a hill of beans whether we're part of the United Nations or not. I don't hold with conspiracy theories, but I don't think it's going to help us very much. But I think this might. It's in New Zealand, they've offered some resources from New Zealand to do some of the bureaucratic spade work. But they also say two of those eight themes, health and housing, for elderly people. Those are areas where our, in my opinion, I believe it's a fact, but some might say it's only an opinion, the Older Persons Advisory Group and their plan significantly failed earlier and I think they're being told here by our national government's minister that those are two areas that should be focused on. So that's the reason that I'm going to support this because I can see that we're going to move into an area that we ought to have been looking at right from the start in this area. So on that basis, I'll support the motion.
Thank you, Councillor. Councillor Mallot?
Thank you. As we all know, this is a age cohort that we all have a great affinity for. Our mums and dads, we love them and if we're lucky, we will all become part of this cohort. But I'm very, very concerned that we are getting plans on top of plans. If you look at page 47, paragraph 27, "An age-friendly plan would be strongly aligned with Hamilton's Older Persons Plan." We already have a plan. Now we're just getting another plan. I have got, with all due respect to the staff members around the table, I have no confidence that we can manage this. I have no confidence that we will have success measures and/or failure measures. I have no confidence that ratepower resources will be used profitably here. As far as I'm concerned, or as far as I'm aware, the Hamilton's Older Persons Plan addresses all of the things that the council can have any impact on, which is car parks, footpaths, parks, all that sort of infrastructure-type stuff that the council, that is the purvey of the council, that is rightfully in the jurisdiction of the council. But the other stuff about loving people and caring for people and looking after them when they're lonely and ringing them up once a week, that's our bloody job. We look after our parents and our older folk and it should not be left to some third party to do that. And I think we are trying to ask a city council to become a family and it can't, it just cannot work. That cannot work. And I'm afraid, my biggest issue is again, that all we are doing here is putting another plan, a plan on top of a plan and at least have the dignity of giving the Older Persons Plan some time to play out. So I'm sorry for the, to the people who have supported this and Peggy. I do respect the amount of time you've put in and the amount of effort and I fully understand you're getting paid nothing for it. So I appreciate that, but I'm sorry, I don't think this is the right way to deal with this issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor. Any other speakers? I just want to say a few words and again, Your Worship has already thanked you, Peggy, and the panel and also the staff that have supported this. I will be supporting the motion. I do think that this is a good opportunity and I do think it's a positive opportunity. I do hear what Councillor Mallot is saying regarding plans and some other members talk about that. But I think anything that raises the awareness of older people and their needs and requirements in the city and I can see the opportunities in the plan that will create, I think that that's a positive thing. I don't understand what on earth this has got to do with Japan or the people living in Japan or the UN. The Age-Friendly Network is under the World Health Organisation.
Point of order, Madam Chair. World Health Organisation is a United Nations organisation. If you look at their logo, they have the UN logo.
Oh, is it? Okay, all right. Well, okay. It sounded like a conspiracy theory, but no, I accept that. But what I do care about are our residents in our city and I certainly care very much about the older people and like Councillor Gallagher, although I reject that that's ever going to happen, I know hopefully it will happen to me. And I do want to live in a good city that does look after its citizens. I certainly don't think that looking after older people has anything to do with red tape. And I am confident that under your leadership, Peggy, that this, when it does come back and it is in the resolution to come back several times and I'm sure this council and your council, the incoming council will keep an eye on that, that that's going to be positive and will contribute for many, many years into the future. So I support that. So Your Worship, the Mayor, right of reply?
No.
No? Okay, so I'm going to put that to the votes. Just on the hands, all those in favour, please raise your hands. Can you call those out, please? The names, someone? Those four? Councillor O'Leary, councillors Chesterman, Young, Gallagher, Your Worship the Mayor Hardacre, councillors Pascoe, McPherson, Green, Tooman and Wilson? And those against, please raise your hands? Councillors King and Mallot. Right. It's been moved. Great, thank you. Look, we're only a few minutes from three o'clock and the next item is the Business Improvement District Policy Review. I do think that that's going to be a lengthy item, so we will stop now for afternoon tea till five past three. Thank you.
And there's a West Ward briefing on a local issue.
Oh, yes, there is.
So where's that?